Good evening and welcome to the public board meeting of the Halton District School Board. The date is October 18, 2023. Chair Shuttlesworth is unable to join us, thus I'll be chairing tonight's meeting, and Trustee Amos will act as vice chair. In person, we have trustees Collard, Gray, Zhang, Daniele, Amos, myself, Oliver, and Bryden. Trustees Shuttlesworth and Baxter have sent in their regrets. And, sorry, I missed trustee Ahmed. He is also here, just stepped out of the room for a minute. All right, trustee Zhang, would you like to make a motion to move, to go into committee of the whole private session respecting legal matters?
Yes, I would.
Okay, the meeting will not be open to the public pursuant to the Education Act, section 207-2. Trustee Bryden, would you like to second the motion?
I would.
Okay, excellent. Is everyone ready for the question? Are there any objections to moving into private session? Okay, seeing none, we are now in private session. And I want to recognize that trustee Ahmed has now joined the meeting. Vice Chair Amos, the floor is yours.
So we will begin in just a minute.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the public meeting of the Halton District School Board for October 18, 2023. To our guests watching online, you will only be able to listen to the meeting as we continue to experience technical difficulties with the video portion. To our guests in the public gallery, this is the public meeting of the Board of Trustees to conduct business of the Halton District School Board. As such, you are welcome to observe, but participation is not permitted. If you have questions of the board, please contact your trustee. And as visitors, we kindly ask that you mute your devices and do not disrupt proceedings. We ask you to comply with instructions given by staff, by security, and myself. Failure to observe these instructions may result in removal from the public gallery. So let us begin. Joining us in person are trustees Bryden, Oliver, Ahmed, Amos, Danielli, Zhang, Gray, and Collard. We are also in the presence of trustee, student trustees, Shabalin and Alimshinov. Sending their regrets this evening are trustees Baxter and Chair Shuttleworth. Before we get started, to all the trustees wearing pink, thank you for participating in Iroquois Ridge High School's Pink Week, which aims to raise awareness for breast cancer. So thank you. Director Ennis, can you note which staff is in attendance this evening?
Thanks so much, Chair Osha, and good evening, everyone. Welcome. We have a full slate of seniors team here this evening to support tonight's board meeting. Associate Director Salmini and Superintendent Radica representing our board are not with us, and we have Superintendent Nagoy online.
All right, trustee Oliver will be honoring the land.
Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anashanabi to the Adwanran, the Hodenasone, and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walked before us, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. Trustee Gray, would you like to move a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Ahmed, would you like to second the motion?
I'd like to second.
Thank you. Are you ready for the question? Are there any objections to approving the agenda? All right, seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest? Okay, seeing none, we are now up to items 2.0, delegations and presentations to the board. This evening, we only have the student trustee report, so I will pass it on to you.
Good evening, fellow trustees, superintendent staff, and those in the gallery. We hope you've all had a good two weeks. Trustee Alimshinov and I couldn't be happier to be back in the boardroom with you all today. Starting off with our largest, most exciting update of the evening, an update on the HTSB Student Senate, which is now officially launched for the 2023-2024 school year. On Tuesday, October 10th, trustee Alimshinov and I conducted our first Student Senate meeting of the school year with over 134 student senators from across the board. With the two of us were in awe as we watched our student senators adapt to their roles and get right into brainstorming ideas, initiatives, and so much more for the school year, as well as strategies on how to best represent their respective school's student voices. We also had previous student senators of the last three or four years speak to their experiences within the Senate and give some advice to our newcomers, which was an awesome learning moment for new senators as well as even trustee Alimshinov and I. Such brainstorming has been noted in documents with trustee Alimshinov and I will be in depthly going through with our staff advisors to create motions for our next in-person, might I add, Senate meeting next month. We also presented our senators with the opportunity to join the HTSB Student Senate Executive Team as well as the Senate Subcommittee Head position based on the pillars of the multi-year plan. Although students have till October 27th to get their applications in, we've already had an overwhelming amount of applications and are excited to establish these crucial leadership positions through motions again at our next Senate meeting. As for numbers, we are at a fantastic place in regards to senator nominations from respective schools, missing just three elementary school nominations. However, we are missing a handful of permission forms from about 12 elementary schools and three secondary schools. So trustees, so trustee Alimshinov and I are hard at work with the support of our outstanding Senate advisors to ensure we receive those nominations and forms before our next in-person Senate meeting, which will take pay. We missed the in-person Senate meeting. If any trustees would like to support us in contacting these principals from your respective wards, please reach out to trustee Alimshinov and I as we graciously appreciate your support on this timely request.
Following the Senate meeting on Thursday, October 12th, trustee Shabalin and I had a very insightful conversation with the co-chairs of the Mental Health and Wellbeing and Student Advisory Committee, Sienna Wu and Judy Wang. The committee being originally established by our predecessors, trustee Regaro and trustee Wang, we wanted to follow up on the upcoming commitments for the year and offer our assistance. Ultimately, we agreed that we will be helping on the promotion side, connecting them with appropriate people within the board, scheduling checkups, and having one trustee serve as a liaison in their meetings. However, as it was originally intended, the Mental Health and Wellbeing Student Advisory Committee will will be running as its own entity, separate from student trustees, with the two co-chairs being the steering wheel. And by the way, for all students watching, the applications to join the committee are due this Sunday, October 22. It is an excellent opportunity to get directly involved in policy-related work in regards to the subject of mental health.
On that same note, earlier this week, trustee Alimshinov and I also had some crucial conversations regarding the Student Equity Committee with System Principal Shalita Walker regarding the Human Rights Symposium and Sabrina Nadeem, the student leader of the Student Equity Committee. Together, we took the documentation previously created by our predecessors, trustee Regero and Wang, as well as the Student Equity Committee members themselves, and created a vision-action item for the committee to work towards this school year. Some of these include a potential equity outreach report involving the committee in panel conversations similar to the director's panel, working with communications on a video series to educate students about vital inclusion topics, a potential staff open floor discussion, ensuring the establishment of equity committees with each secondary and elementary HTSB schools, as well as, of course, their crucial involvement in the planning of the Human Rights Symposium. As you can tell, the group is very ambitious, so the lead has already reached out to committee members to start conversations in the next few weeks, as well as will be working with trustee Alimshinov and I, as well as System Principal Walker, on the planning and execution of the Human Rights Symposium.
Now, to end off on a few smaller updates. Since the previous meeting, we supported Chair Shuttleworth in writing the letter to the Ministry of Education on behalf of our board regarding providing universal breakfast and lunch program to all students across the province in the interest of mitigating increasing food unaffordability. Next, we had a very intriguing meeting with Superintendent Frankovic about starting our plans on the work with artificial intelligence. Trustees Shabalan and I have since drafted our proposed outline for what we aim to achieve by the end of this year, and next week, we are to have a conversation with two shift coaches, Tracy Terry and Sarah Nikaruk, who have been in-depth, doing in-depth research about AI to see how we can cooperate. We are also currently recruiting three Student Senate representatives for the official Board Mental Health Committee and Environmental Committee. Those applications are due on October 27. Lastly, trustee Shabalan and I are off to our first professional development conference hosted by Oste Echo in Toronto starting tomorrow, so we will be updating you with the results at our next meeting. And that wraps it up. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
All right, thank you so much to both of you. I will look to our speakers list. Okay, there's no one on the speakers list, but I do have maybe a suggestion for you both. You mentioned that you do need the trustee's help and perhaps reaching out to some outstanding information. So instead of you receiving 11 emails, would you be open to sending one email with a list of schools and then we can jump in and try to help you out?
That sounds awesome. We'll be sure to get that out this week.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, so thanks again for your report, and we will move on. Okay, as I said previously, there aren't any delegations or presentations this evening, so that brings us to the consent agenda. And we have for approval this evening 3.1.1, the Halton District School Board Meetings for October 4, 2023, as well as the Halton District School Board Special Meeting Minutes for October 16, 2023, as well as the receipt of information items including 3.2.1, the Order Paper, and 3.2.2 Administrative Procedures Update Report 23152. I will put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the HTSB approve the consent agenda and receive the information items for October 18, 2023. Trustee Danielli, would you like to move a motion to deal with the consent agenda?
Thank you. Yes, I would.
All right, trustee Bryden, would you like to second?
I would.
Okay. Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion? Okay, seeing none, are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. That brings us up to 4.0, which is the ratification action item. Vice Chair Amos, do we have any business from private session that requires approval?
No, we don't. Not tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have for action this evening 4.2.1, trustee Honoria Policy Report 23146. Superintendent Nagoy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees, and for the chair to all trustees, the trustee Honoria calculation for the period of November 15, 2023, to November 14, 2024, is listed in the report in accordance with the Education Act, and is up for approval at tonight's meeting. The Appendix A to the policy has been provided in the report as a suggestion to be updated in the policy itself, which will follow on the website once the report is approved. I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you for that report. I will look to our speakers list. Okay, there is no one on the speakers list, so I will read the motion, which requires glasses. Okay. So, the motion, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve trustee Honoria effective November 15, 2023, as noted in Appendix A of the trustee Honoria Policy. Trustee Zhang, would you move that motion?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Trustee Gray, would you like to second?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Okay, is there any debate? Okay, are you ready for the question? Is there, are there any objections to passing the motion as read? Okay, seeing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you. We are on to 4.2.2, trustee Honoria Policy Appendix B Report 23151. Originally, trustee Baxter was going to present that report, but she has sent her regrets last minute. Trustee Oliver, would you be open to presenting her report?
Sure, thank you. I will. Through you, Chair. So this report pertains directly to the report that was just brought forward by Superintendent Nagoy. As my fellow trustees recall, we had this discussion at our latest committee of the whole, and this report brings conclusion to some of the recommendations that were made by staff via amendments to the appendix.
All right, thank you, trustee Oliver. I will read the motion. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees amend Appendix B of the trustee Honoria Policy with the recommendations in Report 23151, and that all prior versions be revoked. Trustee Oliver, would you like to move that motion?
I move the motion.
Thank you. Trustee Danielli, would you like to second?
Yes, thank you. I would.
All right, is there any debate? Okay, are you ready for the question? Are there any objections to approving the motion as read? All right, seeing none, that motion carries unanimously. Moving right along, we are up to 4.2.3, Governance Procedure Report, Report Number 23155, Regarding Trustee Expenses Governance Procedure. Trustee Collard, can you speak to that?
Yes, thank you. I will. The content of the changes to the trustee's expenses governance procedure were already voted on at a prior meeting and were confirmed to go forward with one of the motions being that our governance procedure be updated to reflect those changes. So that is what we are doing here tonight. Thank you. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, thank you, trustee Collard. I see no questions, so I will read the motion. Okay. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees adopt the trustee expenses governance procedure with the recommendations listed in Report 23155, and that all prior versions be revoked. And be it further resolved that the definitions currently contained within the trustee expenses governance procedure be appended to the policy and procedure framework policy. Trustee Collard, would you like to move that motion?
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Oliver, would you like to second?
I will second.
Thank you. Is there any debate? Okay, are you ready for the question? Are there any objections to moving, to approving that motion as read? All right, seeing none, that passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to deferred action, and that means that we will not be voting on this evening, but at a later board meeting. We have 4.3.1, Voting Provisions for Board Reports Revised Appendix C, Report 23154. I am the author of the report on behalf of the Governance Standing Committee, so I will be passing the gavel to Vice Chair Amos.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to your report?
I would. Thank you. So, as discussed at Committee of the Whole, I believe it was last week, myself and the members of the Governance Document Review Committee put forth some recommendations as to how we can be more efficient in the boardroom and also be able to have more fulsome discussions at Committee of the Wholes. We, when making our recommendations, we did look to feedback we received from trustees via email and via a prior Committee of the Whole, and also some feedback from staff. And based on those recommendations, we put together what you see in the report, which is the Proposed Appendix C. At a very high level, what we've proposed is that a lot of the reports that are coming to the board twice, we're proposing that, when possible, we would like the reports to come to Committee of the Whole, where it is a less formal space, and that there is more room for fulsome discussions, and that there are less limitations as to how many times we can speak, and that way we can make more informed decisions. So before you is the Proposed Appendix, as we discussed at Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Do we have any questions? Trustee Collard? Yes, I was just noting that the recommendation doesn't call for revoking the current Appendix C, and I believe we should do that, even though they're both called Appendix C, because they have different names, and so we want to make sure that the other one is revoked.
Thank you. I'll make those changes.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions?
I do have something to add, and I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this. Trustee Bryden did send me some feedback that will incorporate into Appendix C. It's not on this version due to the last-minute changes, but it will come forward in the next board package. But if you do have it handy, I can guide you through the proposed changes. And that is where we've indicated exceptions. It currently reads, except in the following cases, and we've listed four. We're going to make changes to the wording of "be", so instead of legislative changes, it will say required, changes required by legislation. And we're also going to change the name of that section to, for policies and governance procedures, advanced presentation is not required in the following cases. So that way, it's clearer as to what requires two presentations versus what doesn't. And I'll make those changes for the next report.
Thank you. Trustee Gray?
Thank you very much. I just, through the vice chair, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the members of the Governance Documents Review Committee, and in particular, trustee Rocha. This is a pretty heavy lifting and a lot of good thought put into this, and I think that it creates a good way forward for all of us in the way in which we will proceed, and with regards especially to those documents and reports that need to be before the board more than once. So, thank you very much for all of the heavy lifting that you've done to bring this before us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gray. Do we have any other comments or questions around this report tonight? Trustee Collard? Thank you. I was just wondering, you said that this would come to another board meeting for those two additions. I believe that if you ask for them to be included in the minutes, that they don't have to come back, because the minutes will reflect that those two things will be changed, and that by passing this motion tonight, we will have agreed that those changes should be made. You have detailed changes. This is a deferred motion? Oh, this is a deferred motion. Yeah. Oh, I'm so sorry. That's okay. I was trying to make it faster. So this is a deferred motion for tonight, so we'll be coming back to the next board meeting. Are there any other comments or questions regarding this report? If not, then I will pass the gavel back.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair Amos. All right, so that brings us up to item 4.3.2, which is Governance Procedure Report, Report Number 23153, Regarding Appointments to Committees and Other Roles. Go ahead, trustee Collard.
Thank you. As trustees will remember, we reviewed this at Committee of the Whole last week, and questions and answers about the changes were addressed at that meeting. The one thing that is not on the recommendation, which will be when we are voting on this, which is not this day, but in two weeks' time or three weeks' time, there will be a companion motion to rename the policy to match the renamed procedure, so that people will know that they are of the same topic, and there will be no confusion. So there will be that one additional motion in there to rename the policy to reflect the change to the name Appointments to Committees and Other Roles. If there are any questions, please let me know. It is an extensive list, but I believe I captured everything in the notes.
All right, seeing no speakers on the speakers list, we are going to move on to Section 5, Communication to the Board. This evening, we have one item for information from Superintendent Fowler, and that is the Expulsion/Suspension Report, Report 23142.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rocha, and through you, Director Ennis, to trustees. The report in front of you represents the previous three years of February to June suspension and expulsion data. As referenced within the report, the two previous years involved years of COVID public health and safety measures, inclusive of school board closures and isolation requirements. Overall, I'm pleased to report that our suspension and expulsion numbers continue to be among the lowest in the province. This informs us that our students and staff are taking advantage of the many strategies and tools available to them to create safe and inclusive school environments. However, as noted in the report, our student census data informs us that students who identify as Black, Indigenous, gender diverse, and those with special education needs experience a disproportionately higher number of suspensions. Disproportionalities in suspensions and sense of belonging, among other things, indicate that we have more work to do in creating equitable learning environments. Our board's work is to engage in a human rights approach, applying anti-oppressive culturally responsive frameworks within our schools and throughout any disciplinary practices. This will help us to create inclusive spaces that contribute to safer and more equitable schools. There are a variety of ways that we are looking to address these disproportionalities, and for example, we engage all administrators and teaching staff in progressive discipline approaches, application of mitigating circumstances, understanding bias, procedural fairness, and the inclusion and censuring of student and parent voice. For example, today, we presented at our October Family of Schools meetings, and this was part of our focus as we unpacked some additional bullying prevention and intervention resources that we're rolling out through a human rights and whole person approach. We look to create and affirm identity spaces and use these strategies to help build positive school climates and sense of belonging for all of our students. And in addition, I'm very pleased of the partnership that the Safe Schools Department has with our Human Rights, Equity, and Inclusive Education Team, our Indigenous Rights and Education Team, as well as the Well-being and Student Mental Health Team. We're developing lesson plans in partnership with the Programs Department, too, and the professional learning procedures that we're developing and the response and the response protocols and guidelines, similar to the Discriminatory and Harmful Language Protocol that rolled out a number of years ago, will certainly help us to respond to the disproportionate outcomes. The data shows that when schools respond to incidents swiftly and thoroughly, students feel safe and included, which contributes to overall success. So I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
All right, thank you for that report. We do have a speakers list, so I will go to Trustee Collard first.
Thank you very much for this report. I am very pleased to see the inclusion of information about disproportionality and how we, as a board, are choosing to address this. It's always a concern when we know that there is disproportionality, that there may be an incapacity to knowing how to address it. So I'm very pleased to see that there is a path forward on this, and I thank you very much for your work on this.
All right, Trustee Bryden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I requested in advance of this meeting numbers going a little farther backward in time to pre-pandemic and taking a look at some of the comparisons. And our suspension rate is down by about 50% between 2018, 19, and presently. And I'm wondering if you could share with us a little bit of what you think is driving that trend? And is it a good thing? What is the right number of suspensions? What are we trying to achieve?
Thank you, Trustee Bryden, and through you, Vice Chair Rocha. I am very pleased with the work that our board does and 100% the good strategies that we're doing that are making a difference. I mentioned a couple of them in there, really truly looking at helping to understand our students as whole people, understanding that their identities and their lived experiences will present unique situations, and helping our principals, vice principals, and teachers truly recognize their own identities so that when they're interacting with students, they're thinking about the intersectionalities of all of what makes up our individual students. So truly, that creation of a positive school and classroom environment is having a difference. I'd also say that the other real positive is the great work of the Human Rights Equity and Inclusive Education Department in the development of the Discriminatory and Harmful Language Protocol. That protocol has actually, while we've seen maybe an increase of reporting in incidents of harmful language being used, it's actually resulting in conversations that are happening in the classroom level that are teaching all of the students what took place and what harm and impact can come from the use of the language. So I think it's these intentional conversations that are truly making a difference and helping to see our suspension numbers decrease.
All right, do you want to follow up?
I will add, since Trustee Baxter is not here and had questions of her own on her behalf, you know, the report mentions data supporting the disproportionality of suspensions. And is it possible for us to see some of those student census results of what that's at now versus preferably tracking backward over time and where we're trending?
Thank you, Trustee Bryden, and through you, Trustee Vice Chair Rocha, to all trustees. 100%, I do believe that in working in partnership with our research department, we will be creating a fulsome presentation to share the student census data, specifically as it relates to suspensions and the disproportionalities. I think that will really help us to present it in a contextualized environment where we can answer questions as related to the data, specifically digging deeper from the expertise of our research department. So I look forward to, at your request, bringing that to either a Committee of the Whole presentation or bringing that back to the board at some point.
Okay, thank you. The question I was also going to ask, very similar, was, yeah, where are the numbers to back up the claims? So when... So I think what I heard you say is that at a future date, we will see this report that will have data to show the disproportionate outcomes for the different groups that you've identified, correct?
So through you, Vice Chair Rocha, and through you, Vice Chair Rocha, what the presentation would be is the presentation would review the student census data as it relates to suspensions and expulsions. It wouldn't necessarily specifically be a new report like this, but it would be a fulsome presentation that highlights that disproportionate data.
Okay. So to follow up, could I ask that perhaps future suspension and expulsion reports contain that information? And what I mean is, right now, there's a sentence in here that reads, "to address the disproportionate outcomes for our students who identify as..." And there are a few groups mentioned, but there's no data in the report to show how big that disproportion is. So is it 1 in 10, or is it 9 in 10? So just to get a more fulsome idea as to how... Not how anything, but just what exactly are the numbers and how concerned we should be? The other question I have, I heard you say that you, the team, reached out to the Human Rights and Equity Group. Has there any thought been given to reaching out to PIC and CIAC for their input on how we can address some of the issues raised?
Thank you, Vice Chair Rocha, and through you, Vice Chair Rocha. Certainly, we can, once the data has been shared in a contextualized fashion through the research department, I would be more than happy to include that in future reports. 100%, so that's noted. With regards to reaching out to PIC and CIAC, I absolutely can take this report and ask to get on those agendas to see if they have any input and specifics. But I do want to say that this report is also shared at the senior table with all colleagues. So Superintendent Reddick from the Special Education Lens works with us to review this and our data and our numbers, and provides that input, as well as Superintendent Connor. So we do have the superintendents at the table that will bring those ideas forward, but I think that's a great idea to just request that I maybe have some time on an agenda to present the report, so thank you.
All right, seeing no further speakers, thank you so much for this report this evening. All right, we are now up to 5.2 notices of motion. Are there any notices for this evening? None? All right, that brings us up to 5.3, Director's Report, and I will give you the mic.
Thank you so much, Chair Rocha. Good evening, everyone. I begin with great news this evening, as the Halton District School Board was recognized this past week as one of the two boards in the province that has exceeded all of the achievement levels for EQAL. And to that end, I would like to say thank you to the Board of Trustees for their ongoing support through our multi-year plan. Thank you to the senior staff. Thank you to every teacher and staff in our schools, including our custodial and secretarial staff, because I believe that everyone that is in a school contributes to the achievement of our students. And so I want to thank the senior team for their leadership, the Program Department, and everyone who enables our students to learn, to provide the kinds of instructions that has afforded the Halton District School Board to stand out as a board of excellence in achievement. So I ask you to join me in congratulating the students, and I want to thank the families, many of whom are here tonight, for their great work in supporting our students in getting to that great achievement. So just so you know, if you're not aware of some of the, I may just highlight a few for you. In our Grade 3 Math, we had 69% exceeding the provincial standards. In Grade 6, 62.7. In Grade 9, 70%. In Reading, Grade 3, 80%. In Grade 6 Reading, 90%. In Grade 3 Writing, 74%. In Grade 6 Writing, 90%. In Grade 9 Math, we have 69% met or exceeded the provincial standard, which is an increase of 8%. And in our Grade 10 OSSLT, Ontario Secondary School Literacy Test, we have over 92% of our students who met or exceeded the standard. So we say congratulations to our students, our staff, our families, and everyone who contributes to this great success that we've been experiencing. So thank you so much. We will continue to work harder. We know there's work to be done, and we're going to continue to focus on that as well. So please join me in congratulating everyone. I'd also like to take this opportunity to welcome the new manager of Governance and Board Services. Her name is Carolina Khan, and she will be joining us. She comes to us after lots of work in governance and boardwork. She was working at the Town of Orangeville in Corporate Services Department, and has had lots of experience in governance and through the Ministry of the Solicitor General, Municipal Affairs and Housing. And also, she has quite the lengthy credentials of education. So we want to be looking forward to her joining us. She's joining us actually on Monday next week. So the chair beside me will not be vacant any longer. So I look forward to having that person right beside me, whom we can all lean into and ask for guidance, support, and advice. On a more somber note, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize in memoriam two individuals who were part of our HDSP family, who are no longer with us. We have Will Lau, who was a tech person working in our Information Services, based out of New Street. And he started working with us in 2005. And Will is passed away in September 18th after a lengthy illness. And so he will be dearly missed by his wife Kate, their two boys Ben and Harry, and all his colleagues here at the HDSP. I also want to take this opportunity to recognize in memoriam Quinn Albrecht. Quinn is a kindergarten student from New Central Public School. And I'll just read the obituary. It says, "Quinn was a ray of sunshine that could light up every room just with his presence. He touched so many people in just four short years. He was always happy and wise beyond his years. He moved through each stage of growing up with grace and was amazing at self-regulating and adapting. He was so thoughtful and sweet with all his friends and was always happy to play with them and do what they wanted. Quinn took joy in the simple things in life and just wanted to be with his family all the time. Even if it was just running errands, he was happy just to be with you. Quinn's family and friends are going to miss him terribly, and so will we at the Halton District School Board. If you would just join me in a moment of silence before these two individuals." Thank you. And Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
All right, thank you, Director Ennis. Up next, we have communications from the chair. The only communication is that the regular chair will be back November 1st at the next board meeting. We'll move on to 5.5 Committee Reports. Are there any committee reports for this evening? Trustee Collard.
This isn't a committee, it's a working group. But I wanted everyone to know that the Working Group for the Delegation Policy and Governance Procedure has had its first meeting and will be having its next meeting tomorrow. We got a lot of progress on a couple of the issues already, and I feel like we are going to move forward in a really good way, at a really quick pace. Hopefully have this wrapped up by the end of November. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Trustee Collard. I see no other updates for committees. I will look to our OPSPA representatives. Are there any OPSPA updates for public session?
Yes, there would be. Just wanted to make note and thank all of those trustees who were able to be aboard today for the very good lunch and learn that OPSPA put on as part of their leadership series. The topic today was meaningful engagement, how to hear the voices that matter on issues that are important. And it was a great series, and it will be followed up with a similar topic in about a month's time. Also, I'd like to remind trustees, if you haven't already, let Carly Garbus know of your presence at the Saturday, November 4, Central West and Waterloo Regional Meetings, being held in Kitchener. Please do so. Carly Garbus would have sent you all an email looking for your indication of whether or not you're going to be in attendance. Again, that's Saturday, November 4, from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. in Kitchener. Thank you.
If I may just add, that November 4th workshop, that is a joint meeting with the Western Region. It's something that we do once a year, and so there will be expanded PD. We're still working on exactly who our professional development will be that day. We've had a number of options put forward. We just, we ran into some difficulties because OPSPA's system was down, and they were not receiving my emails. They were bouncing back to me. So the setting up the training has been a little more difficult, but there will be news soon on the training. And I'd encourage everyone to attend if they can, because it is a wonderful opportunity to network and learn from other trustees in other regions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Trustees Gray and Daniele. That brings us up to 5.7, trustee questions and comments, and I will look to our speakers list. First on the list is Trustee Ahmed. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Rocha. I am just bombarded with the emails and text messages and phone calls about the things that are happening globally. I just wanted to say that, I just wanted to thank everyone for reaching out. Wanted to assure that I'm passionate about fair and inclusive treatment of all students, families, and staff in the HDSP. And I also want to create an environment, to the best of my ability, where all students feel safe expressing their compassion for any and all innocent civilians who are caught in the conflict. Everyone should be treated equally and without a bias. That's what we work for at HDSP. If there are any confirmed reports of discrimination, harassment, or mistreatment, please bring them to the attention of the board. If you find any incidents of anyone seeking to stifle student experiences or by staff participating of bias, as the emails and the text messages are suggesting that they are concerned and they are afraid that this is going to happen, or Western media fed one-sided recounting of events or issues, please bring it to our attention. Anti-Semitism, including anti-Palestinian racism, should not be taken lightly and will not be taken lightly at HDSP. We stand for equality. We are there for everyone. And I also have to add one thing on a completely different note. I want to say that we always expect the best from our staff. We must also acknowledge and appreciate when our staff not only does a good job, but they exceed all expectations. And today, I would like to acknowledge and thank Superintendent Fowler for a great job. And I wanted to do this many times, but somehow, like, I just got carried away with the proceedings. And you've been doing a great job, having my back, taking care of schools in my wards. You're a great resource, not only for our board, but for the community. You're an asset. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, and I'm sure if all the trustees had a chance, they would say the very same thing about all of the superintendents in the room this evening. So we thank them all. Thank you, Trustee Ahmed, for that. And certainly, we hear your plea. And, you know, as a board, we seek to center the human rights of all human beings. We believe that is the right approach, and, you know, we are mindful of everyone... We believe that is the right approach, and, you know, we are we're mindful of everyone that we serve within our our school population, and this is the message that we've been trying to make all along, that we serve everyone. And so that that everyone includes all people, and so that that we won't deviate from that. And I think that is that is very important, that we we recognize that as a school community. And so I ask, you know, parents, communities, and everyone to join us in creating that inclusive community where everyone can feel that they belong. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director Ennis. I see no further speakers on our list, so I want to thank everyone for their participation this evening. I want to thank our public gallery for being attentive, and I want to say that our next board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 1st. And with that, our agenda has been exhausted, and meeting is adjourned. Thank you.